Good morning and welcome to the July 16, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, if we could rise and remember those who have gone before us. A moment of silence. Susan, can you please lead us in the question?
Yes, ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda, any extra items? Nope?
No.
Okay, that's all good. Approval of consent agenda, consent agenda or items that are seen as non-controversial. Somebody from the board can pull an item for further qual- questions or anybody wishing to pull an item? Supervisor Sabatier?
Madam Chair, I would like to pull item number 5.6 and we have a community member who would like to pull item 5.3.
Okay. Any public input on consent agenda items? We're pulling that item, so we'll come back to it if that's... So I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I'd like to approve consent agenda items 5.1, 5.2, 5.4, 5.5, and 5.7 through 5.14.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is it okay if we go ahead and take up 5.3?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Chair, the PEG contract, which is 5.3, has been the project of current CAO Matthew Rothstein, and he'll present it to your board.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. We'll do public input in a minute after Matthew.
Good morning, Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County CAO. I wanted to just introduce this item to you guys this morning. Thank you for the opportunity. As your board is aware, the cities and county have entered into an agreement to operate a public educational and governmental television station, and that agreement began November 17, 2015. Basically, the agreement before your board today is an extension of that. There is a financial commitment on the part of the county of $15,000 that has already been budgeted for this year. You may be aware that those payments are actually made late in the fiscal year. They're made around April 1 of each year. So this agreement is substantially the same. There have been some edits made to clean up the language and hopefully make the contract a little bit more usable to all of the parties. But the only substantive change is the addition of some performance measures. Those performance measures reflected longstanding PEG priorities in the first place, and they've also been reviewed by our city partners and the PEG Board in total on Monday, July 8. And all parties are in agreement with those, both that they're reasonable and that they serve PEG's mission. So we're here before you just to execute this agreement, which extends for a two-year period, and we will certainly welcome any comments.
Okay. Comments or questions? Supervisor Sabatier?
I mean, I'm glad that this item was pulled, because I do have a question. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it said that the pass-through had to be approved by every jurisdiction in order for it to take effect.
Are you meaning the 1%?
The 1%?
Okay, so our assumption under the relevant section of the Public Utilities Commission is that unless MediaCom's franchise agreement with the state expires, there's no need for us to reauthorize the ordinances enabling the 1% pass-through fees?
So anybody that utilizes MediaCom is paying the 1% pass-through?
If...
Regardless of what jurisdiction they may be in?
Yes, and that's because each of the jurisdictions did act to pass an ordinance, and so that would be expected to continue. Sean Swatchash has indicated that MediaCom's in the process of renewing their agreement, and that is actually a distinct matter from the agreement before your board today. Certainly, it's an important funding stream for PEG, and appreciate your question.
And Matthew, to just clarify a little further, both cities are in agreement with this contract as written and are in the process of approving as well?
Yes.
And I'll just make a final statement, and this is not something that I want to change right now, but I think it should be part of a conversation for the future. And I'm seeing, this is PEG, it's Public Education Government, and government, again, seems to not be looking at our local governments. We're only seeing the county and the cities, and we're ignoring tribal government. And I'd love to see if we can involve tribal government in expanding PEG, because that's a whole other slew of potential programming or potential videos that could be submitted and participation in making PEG a stronger, more resourceful venue for our community, so...
Absolutely, and as you're aware, collaboration with tribes in the community generally are Vision 2028 priorities for the county. We would certainly support that. But also, as you're aware, the PEG Board is really responsible for setting the policy direction and programming for the PEG station, and so those comments are really most appropriately addressed to the PEG Board, and we'll certainly pass those along to our liaison, Mr. Ed Robey.
Right.
Is it Supervisor Sainz?
Yeah. I do know that since I've been on the board, I know Ed has reached out to myself. I don't know if you've had any conversations with him, but Ed has asked us to do the best that we can to try and provide the content on, you know, whatever we want to... We have Indian Days in September, we have a lot of celebration dances and other stuff that we do in the public. So I know Ed is, he has reached out a couple of different times, and so I think any conversations, it's great that we're talking about it today here on TV. Hopefully, everybody's paying attention and listening. So, yeah, there has been an outreach for it. But we got to get the content, we got to do the filming, and that, I think that's where the challenge is, getting that over to the PEG Board to kind of get it on the TV form. So there has been outreach at this point.
Yes, and I know that the PEG Board is aware that making it easier to get content to them is a significant priority, and they report that they're working on that. So just hoping to make some good changes soon.
Yeah, and I'm glad that you brought it up, Bruno, because I see it also as another kind of, I can relate it to the TID, you know, like how they have their own separate, like, group, so maybe they can get in touch with some of the tribes and set some meetings and just pass that along, like you said. I think that they would put some input in. I know that we haven't been reached out to at Robinson. I'm sure Upper Lake would, you know, appreciate some of that as well, and they have the resources to, you know, put forth some video, you know, some video towards, footage and whatnot towards the group. But I think it's the right time. It's not like, there's nothing wrong with it not being done before. I think it's the right time to start doing it now, so, thank you.
Is there any further board questions or comments before we open it to the public? Okay, I'm going to open it to public, comments or questions? If you could please state your name, and you have three minutes. About anything or this particular topic?
I'm Joan Moss, and I want to do kudos to a video that Bonnie Sloan, member of ELEM, myself, and Ellen Markowski broadcast on PEG. The manager at the time put it on YouTube, almost 4,000 hits. It's really great. And what I would like is to know when the meetings are and where they are. I'm not getting the notices I used to get. I'd like to know if Ed Robey is still the chairman?
He is still the chairman.
He is still the chairman. And I just think there's a great deal of potential here, and I believe the public needs to be aware of where the meetings and when they are in a more... I used to get emails about where and when, I don't anymore, and I believe there should be more input by the public to participate.
Does anybody know what the...
And what I disagree with, I don't understand, it said it's entered into the 7th day of November 2015. I think some of these things on this agreement might need to be looked at, because it's not November 2015.
You may be looking at the previous agreement.
She's looking at the old one, she is.
Anyway, thank you very much, and I think there are possibly, people from the public
are not being informed about what's going on.
I can definitely pass along that feedback, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we know the date and so forth?
I believe it's the second Wednesday of every month, and it goes back and forth from Clear Lake and Lakeport, and it is a publicly noticed meeting and has a public comment at every single meeting. So it's, just like this meeting, it's noticed to the public, and it's available to the public to go. But I'm sure there's a way for you to get back on the email list, and I would say go to the administration office and ask.
They have a website, simple, easy email or web address, lakeTV8.org. LakeTV8.org. That's a great way to get in touch with them.
Is there any further public comment on this item? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve item 5.3 from the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll go ahead and, can we pull our, open our 5.6 item? Todd, are you ready? Waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Governorate Code Section 38.2 as it is not public interest due to unique nature of goods and services and be approved agreement between the county of Lake and the Crisis Support Service of Alameda County for crisis support services fiscal year 2019-20 for a contract minimum of $31,296 and authorize the board of chair to sign the agreement. Supervisor Sabatier, since you pulled this item, I don't know if you want to ask the question, or does Todd want to?
So I had a conversation with Todd about this. One of my, kind of my, one of the things I've been reviewing a lot, especially as we're going through the process with the generators, is the waiving of the formal bidding and really asking myself, is this really something we can waive? And so I talked to Mr. Metcalf, and I will let him continue from there.
Thank you, Bruno. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. We decided to pull this item because you've heard me talk a lot about wanting to bring monies back into the county, and Bruno brought to my attention that Lake Family Resource Center provides these similar types of services, and so I actually have a meeting with them this afternoon, and I want to talk to them about this to see if they have the capacity to do this, because I, Lake County Behavior and Rural Services cannot perform these services in-house, we just don't have the capacity. But since Lake Family Resource Center already performs these types of services, may as well give it a shot and see if they're up for it. So that's why we pulled the agenda item.
Okay. So any further comments or questions from the board? So any comments or questions from the public on this item? See no movement? So I guess we'll just pull this item for a date...
Hopefully get it on next week.
Appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will go to our 6.1 item, our 9:05 a.m. item. Public input. Our first public input is Yolanda. How are we working with our state senators, congress, and representatives regarding PG&E? You could come up to the microphone, and you have three minutes.
Right here?
Yes.
So, you know, we're really hearing that...
Hold on, one second, please. Do we need a hearing device? I just heard him mention that.
We need some help. We can't hear...
Do we have...
We have one here somewhere. Well, we have old systems, didn't work until then. Okay, we've used them here before, so, okay. Bless you. Well, we need to have it, because we're required to have it, so...
I wouldn't mind if it was, the volume was put up, just to see if that helps, I don't know. I mean, better than nothing.
Could we have him come up closer and send him the chair up here to start with?
Sam, turn up the volume. Where would be, Sam, where would be the best place for him to sit?
Where are the speakers at?
He's right underneath one of them now.
Do you want to come, can he come sit up here, ask him if he'd like to come sit up front?
So he's here for the 9:30 hearing, maybe we should...
Yeah, we can maybe get one from the fourth floor. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for noticing that, Supervisor Brown.
We can actually also have him come back and actually put his phone on.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
We'll just pause a second while we...
Does he have any percentage of hearing?
What's that?
I wonder if he has any percentage of hearing? Because otherwise, the headphones aren't helping.
You'd have to ask him.
I think he does, because he responded when he said come over here.
No, I just got with my mom, because she has 0 and 40%, so...
He apparently does, because he was...
Sam's going to put...
I spoke to him earlier.
Oh.
We'll have something for him by then, yeah.
So somebody's, can you hear, can you hear now, sir? All right, all right, all right. All right, Yolanda, we are on, so, three minutes.
I think it's great that, you know, you guys are getting generators for the county, you know, to keep people working and also, you know, keep the county going. But we can't stop there, you know, and so wanted to know how you are working with our state representatives, PG&E, and to put Lake County on a higher priority for the electric underground construction, because we want to see a light at the end of the tunnel. We don't want to go on with this forever. And also to create funding for this type of emergency, for low-income folks to buy generators, establishing resource centers around the lake with air conditioning for elderly and those who have medical conditions, you know. Also to provide more sheriffs for these up-to-five-day power outs. I mean, five days is a long time. We're going to need more help around the county here, you know. I mean, we have to be prepared and we have to take care of folks, you know, and if we can work with, you know, the state and PG&E to create some kind of new funding, you know, we've called, you know, it's got a different name than the other emergencies, so they said we don't have funding, but, you know, we can work on that. So it's just my concern, you know, because Lake County has, what, 20% low income, you know, or poverty level, and, you know, 50% of the county has been burned, you know, and if we put these small businesses down for five days, they're out the door, and we'll be a ghost town. So, you know, I'm just hoping that you have, you know, a plan to work with folks to do this, and I'll be available to help if you need some.
Great, thank you. So any other, are you here for a specific item? Just to make sure.
No, I just was here for an open three minutes.
Okay, okay, why don't, can we just have him come up and then have him fill a form? So if you could come up and we'll have you fill a form out afterwards.
Why is he sitting here?
No, I know you said something about wanting to speak, so I just want to make sure that you're not just sitting there and we're ignoring...
Is this my three minutes, or do I get on the agenda?
No, this is your three minutes.
Okay, so it's interesting, she just brought, okay, so, let me just start.
If you could state your name for us.
First of all, good morning.
Good morning.
Is this working?
It is. Okay.
I'm Lee Knowles, and I'm just here to make you guys aware, if you're not already aware, of a program from PG&E that the county is eligible for up to $250,000 per site or facility and $4 million per tax ID for energy efficiency upgrade projects. And it's basically done from the California and the CPUC to basically, they have a goal to reduce not only energy consumption but carbon emissions. So what they do through this program is PG&E provides all the upfront costs for these projects, and so that the county doesn't have zero capital outlay, zero budget impact, because they know, one, you guys don't have the budget to do this. So in addition to that, they know, hey, guess what? We can also provide you the money, but you don't have the bandwidth to implement the project. So what they do is they get third-party administrators, which is one of our companies, which do 95 to 98% of the heavy lifting, so that whoever's project this lands on, they're not overwhelmed and they can do their everyday activities. So it's basically a way to get that done. So I want to make you aware of that, so it's not only for the county, but it's every business service within PG&E territory. So the city, the school districts, it's all available to you. And I'll, there's some other thing, because what happens is they take out of everybody's bill, this is off the thing, just for her education, hundreds of millions of dollars for energy efficiency measures, okay, into the billions. So that's one of them. And your, your county fairgrounds, Lake County Fairground is taken advantage of, and more of a reference point is the state of California. So what they did was, they want to say, hey, is this program for real? So they did a pilot with their state parks. It was such a success that they go, okay, Matt Henigan, the Deputy Director of Sustainability for California, goes, I want to use this money for my Department of Fish and Game, EDD, DMV, and now he's using it for Cal State and Cal Fire. So I just want to let you guys know that those monies are available to you, if you guys are interested, and then I can send you guys an email, so now you know that it's not spam. And the reason here is to make you aware of it, because otherwise, you know, you guys get bombarded by everybody saying, hey, we can do this, this, and that. So I just want to let you know, the monies are there for you. If guys are interested, let me know, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
So I just want to add, I'm the one that connected them with the fairgrounds.
Oh, okay.
And also shared with them, Carol connected them with this County Office of Education for all the school districts, all the seniors and us. We are aware of it, and we have been working with them.
Awesome. Yeah, because Jay is my counterpart. The one who did the county?
I don't know who Jay is.
Oh, no, he's the one that did the Lake County Fairgrounds.
Okay, yeah.
Madam Chair, I think your board is aware, our Public Services Director, Lars Huling, the Space Committee, and our office are all working on energy upgrades, and in fact, the Public Services Director expects to have an RFP out for those services very soon. A number of the upgrades have already been done in our buildings, lighting and such, but there's certainly more that can be done, and if this gentleman would like to leave his business card, we can make sure he's added to the vendors that receive a copy of that RFP.
Okay, so Lee, when you leave today, if you could go across the way to your left, there's a door, if you could fill out one of these public input forms and then leave your business card with him.
Okay, that'd be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Wonderful, thank you. So any further public input on items that are not appearing on the posted agenda? Okay, we will then go to our 6.2 item, our 9:08 a.m. item, Presentation and Proclamation of Designating the Week of July 15 through 21st, 2019 as Invasive Weed Awareness Week in Lake County.
Good morning, everybody. Today, proclamation designating the week of July 15 through 21st, 2019 as Invasive Weed Awareness Week in Lake County. Whereas the spread of certain harmful, non-native species of plants causes damage to the environment and economy of Lake County, and whereas destructive impact of invasive weeds is profoundly affecting, is profoundly affecting Lake County's cropland, rangeland, forests, parks, and wildlands, causing losses of land productivity, degradation of wildlife habitat, and decreased diversity of wetlands, waterways, watersheds, and recreational areas. And whereas nauseous and invasive weeds have destroyed portions of riparian, goodness gracious, riparian habitat along creeks, streams, rivers, lakes, and reservoirs in Lake County, damaging the integrity of the riparian system and altering and enhancing erosion, sedimentation, flooding, and fire. And whereas, Lake County has a noxious weed management program for the purposes of managing and eradicating nauseous weeds through its local weed management area. And whereas, programs designed to prevent, control, manage, and eradicate non-native and noxious weeds have emphasized information sharing, education, and public awareness as crucial to the success of prevention, control, and eradication efforts. And whereas, the Lake County Weed Management Area has been successful in starting the process of identifying and eradicating both terrestrial and aquatic invasive and noxious weed species in Lake County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the week of July 15 through July 21, 2019 as Invasive Weed Awareness Week in Lake County and encourages all residents to participate in activities that raise awareness of both the scourge, the scourge and these weeds and methods to prevent their pernicious spread. Little tongue-tie, but signed by our Chair, Tina Scott.
I would like to thank the board for their support of the weed program. And what's different this year than the previous years is that our weed tour took place on May 9 and not this week. People appreciate to see live weeds than dead weeds. So it was held at the Anderson Marsh State Park. There was 15 people that attended. It was a walking tour, and it did include aquatic weeds. The tour was hosted by the Ag Department, by Lake County Department of Water Resources, and members of the Lake County Resource Conservation District.
Great.
So it's already happened, but it's better to see live weeds than dead ones.
And now we do the proclamation.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, we are early for our 9:30 item, so I'm going to take up 7.2, Consideration of Waiving the Formal Bidding Process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2 as it is not public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services and be approving the agreement between the county of Lake and Native American Mental Health Services, DBA, North American Mental Health Services for fiscal year 2019-20 for contract minimum of $1 million and authorize the board of chair to sign the agreement. Todd, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Todd Metcalf, I'm the Administrator of Lake County Behavior and Health Services. Déjà vu, it seems, I wish I could come up here and talk about something new. This is, I think, the third time I've come up here and talked about this. This contract, again, is a result of the unfunded state mandate for the Network Adequacy Certification Tool, which requires every mental health plan in every county in the state of California to ensure mental health services are available to folks, actually to every resident of the county, within a predetermined time and distance. The state comes up with this formula. So we did contract with North American Mental Health Services last year for these same services. We only expended almost $400,000 of that contract, and I explained before that the state has its own formula, that it's a predetermined amount that's based on population, that we have to come up with a dollar amount like this, and as I explained before, we probably won't expend these funds, but it's sort of a life insurance, not life insurance, an insurance policy to the state that we can guarantee these services. So that's the purpose of this contract. So I'm bringing it to the board and asking you to approve this agreement.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
You said that we spent about $400,000, and I believe we signed the last of the amendment to that contract sometime in May or April.
Yeah, it was late, yes.
And that was the fix, to make sure that we didn't get any kind of consequences for the state.
Right.
And they dictate not that you have to have it available, but that you have certain FTEs available for them.
Yes.
Is it by number of population that they look at?
It's all based...
That FTE amount?
Yeah, it's all based on the population of each county. So some of the larger counties are struggling with this. I know Fresno, San Bernardino, they're expecting them to have like almost 600, 600 of these folks to provide these services, and they're not, they're not able. Though we are, I mean, of course, we have to contract these services out, because we don't have anybody here locally.
So you're saying we should be happy it's only $1 million compared to what it should be when the population is much higher? Do you know what kind of action is happening statewide, whether it's CSAC or RCRC trying to, because obviously, we're not the only ones that's dealing with this situation of trying to reduce the overall cost, because I'm sure that, I mean, $1 million is a large amount, especially, I think it said it's out of 1.6 million from your budget item for contracting out. So do you know what kind of movement is happening, if any at all?
It's almost changing daily. There is a potential lawsuit in the works, that certain counties are wanting to sue the Department of Healthcare Services, because as I've explained before, we have to earmark these funds, and they could be used for something else. So you think of all the millions of dollars that are set aside for these services that probably won't happen, and it's been a moving target lately. Yesterday, a very lengthy email came out from the County Behavior and Health Directors Association, who I am a member of, outlining this potential lawsuit. And as you may recall, we were one of the 10 counties that were up for being potentially sanctioned, because we were out of compliance. We are in compliance, but if the other counties are going along with this, we most likely will as well. So I'll be working with county council as we move forward. The state is our, or the counties have already hired an attorney, and so, like I said, it's changing daily.
Right, right, right. And my last question is, where will be the, because this is telemedicine.
Correct.
Where will be the source for your clients to be able to access the telemedicine?
We have, we have, you know, it's just like TV.
But it'll be around the county or a specific facility?
Specifically, just our two clinics in Lucerne and the city of Clear Lake is where the services are provided, so...
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
And we are, I mean, we are in compliance, so pretty much all the other counties are just doing what the state is telling us to do. In the meantime, there's this lawsuit potentially in the works.
Thank you.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I just put it down, sorry. I just had a question, is it a matter of available services to the people? I mean, because we're spending $400,000, like you said, right? And there's a million available, and we all know that there's, one of the underlying issues in the county is mental health services. Is it available and people just aren't getting to it, or is it difficult to get the people that are providing... Is it available and people just aren't getting to it? Or is it difficult to get the people that are providing the services to us out?
Well, it's actually a little bit of both. Again, I have to remind everyone that our services are voluntary. So, we can't round folks up and force them into our programs. And as far as the Network Adequacy Certification Tool, in theory, it's great. So, everyone does have access to our services. So, as I said, we are providing those services in City of Clearlake and Lucerne. This fiscal year, I'm working on getting our other facilities, our other peer support centers, Medcalm certified. So, we can also provide more services around the lake, which will actually exceed the state's expectations on where we're providing services. So, we're headed in the right direction.
Thank you, Todd.
Any further questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? See no movement. I'll bring it back to the board for action. Oh, did you have a comment on this item?
I was going to notice to come at 9:30.
Okay, we're not quite there yet. We'll let you know. Okay.
Wants to make sure and not miss it.
So, Supervisor Simon?
Madam Chair, make a motion to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2. It is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of the goods of services. And to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Native American Mental Health Services, DBA North American Mental Health Services for Telepsychiatry Services for fiscal year 2019-20 for a contract maximum of $1 million and authorize the Board and Chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now open our 6.3 item, which is-
Madam Chair, could I get you to pause for just a second?
Okay.
Sam was attempting to work on a microphone solution, so this gentleman can hear from the headphones and speak from back there.
Okay.
And with that in mind, he may need a few more minutes. So, I don't know if you would want to consider-
How about calendars?
Yeah.
All right, we'll go-
The Public Works Director to come down.
All right, we'll go to calendar. Supervisor Sabatier?
Let me open up my calendar. All right. Today, I may or may not be meeting with staff, city manager from the City of Clearlake. We'll see how our timing works. If not, that meeting will occur tomorrow. Tomorrow, I have a LAFCO meeting here in Lakeport, or at least in Lakeport City Hall, not here in this chamber. Later on that day, an AVA meeting, same place, City Hall in Lakeport. And then I will also be meeting with the City of Clearlake about housing development as well later on that evening. Thursday and Friday, I will be, actually later on Wednesday, I will also be attending the workshop or the presentation happening at the New Paradigm College over in Lucerne. And then Thursday and Friday, I will be joining Supervisor Crandall in Sacramento for the last of our-
Yours has just been cleaned electronically.
For our last of our CSAC New Supervisors Institute workshops. And I believe that after that, I'm back here on Monday, doing what I do to prepare for these meetings on Tuesday.
Okay, great. Supervisor Simon?
Board meetings today, this afternoon, have some meetings down in South County with some constituents about projects that are happening down in our area. Tomorrow, I have LAFCO and Ava, Van and Vehicle Abatement here in Lakeport with Bruno. And then Thursday, in the morning, be down in my district. And then back up here in the afternoon for the Disaster Council Meeting. It's our second meeting of this year. Don't have anything over the weekend at this point. Friday, I would like to be out of county in San Francisco. Someone and family's having surgeries, so I'll be down there. And then back here on Monday, to meet with Carol and Justice Bruno, prepare for next week's meeting. I do want to report that yesterday, we had our Risk Reduction Authority Meeting and we received our first grant of $5,000 for education and outreach and we're looking to put something together. So, we got some movement. So, it was exciting yesterday and we also picked a logo. So, we will be doing a press release at some point over the next couple of weeks here and really getting this thing off the ground and rolling.
Supervisor Brown?
I got a question, Moak, about that risk reduction. Are you guys looking at the hazardous vegetation? I know there was a big rush to get that in place and all that, but it's pretty deeply flawed. And I'm just hoping that they're going to bring it back at some time and really look at it and identify some of the areas that need to be addressed before next season where people can actually go in and start clearing where they should be clearing.
We are getting reporting from Community Development and Mary Jane. They haven't come to the meeting. So, we've been getting reporting, talking about the steps and the processes we moved through. So, general conversation at this point, but I definitely think that there's something we need to bring back to the board as we get ready for next year's
Yeah, okay.
season and how we approach it. Because those conversations are happening, but we need to have that conversation here at the board and I think that's something we can do.
And I think the flaws were not in our language as much as it was, we lifted some of it from other communities. And there are some things that are in there that don't really apply, like stump removal and, you know, things like that. So, anyway, I'll be interested to hear that when you bring it up, so.
Candle? Your calendar, yes.
My candle?
Your candle.
Burning at both ends. So is my calendar. So, I have a couple of meetings this afternoon. I got, actually, I have, I think, six meetings scheduled this week with people who are going crazy over this hemp thing. And for, some of them for good reason. You know, these guys are scrambling to get this in and, you know, neighbors be damned. And so, it's like huge acreage, dust everywhere. And so, it's a real problem. And I'm going out and talking to these guys individually, saying, "All eyes are on you guys right now. You screw this up, it's going to screw up for everybody." So, you know, maybe there's a time to visit with these guys because they're, you know, they're in a hurry to try to get in the ground. But in the meantime, it's causing a lot of problems and no support. You know, people are not supporting this at all because of that. So, that's six of my meetings for the next couple of days. And I have meetings with a couple of constituents regarding the hazardous vegetation and how that applies to them and their neighbors. So, I'll be meeting with them as well. And then back in the office on Monday.
Okay, Supervisor Crandall?
So, we have a meeting after this. I think this is one of the meetings you have as well with Carol and I think it's HR, HR as well.
Just us?
Oh, just us?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, we have that meeting after this. And then tomorrow, I have North Shore Business Association.
That's assuming we have a interim Water Resources Director. We haven't taken any action yet.
So, I have the North Shore Business Association, West Region Town Hall in Upper Lake, and then the New Paradigms event that's going on tomorrow evening. Thursday, we will be going to our CSAC, the supervisors' training that we obtained. And with that, I'll also be coming back after to attend the Lucerne Town Hall where Anita will be with us to help with some, not only Brown Act, you know, information, but also, or Brown Act training. And then also, you know, going over some of the bylaws and hopefully clearing some air in that town hall. So, then back to CSAC on Friday. And then on Monday, I have a meeting with Carol and then back to supervisor, so.
Great. After this meeting today, I'll be attending Agenda Review. And at 3 o'clock, I've been invited to see our new pop-up showers that we have for our homeless neighbors. That's going to be traveling around the community to help them be able to not only take a shower, but they have an office in there that they can maybe direct them to services. So, that's exciting thing coming to our community.
Is that the Adventist Health?
Yes, Adventist Health Shower with Pastor Shannon. 6 o'clock, I'll be attending the City of Lakeport Meeting. Tomorrow morning, actually all day tomorrow, I will be attending the Youth Mental Health Awareness Day. And then also attending at 7 o'clock, the New Paradigm College Program. So, the three supervisors-
We will not be asking questions.
We're just going to listen. And then Friday, I have an 8 a.m. meeting with Hope Center. We're talking about the operations of that center in Clearlake. And then Disaster Council Meeting at 3 p.m. On Friday, I will be loading my 10 children up and we're going to be heading to Monterey for four days. So, wish me luck on that. That's always interesting. And then back here on Tuesday.
I forgot to add something. I had the Fire Safe Council last Thursday. And as Mo talked about, because you asked about the vegetation ordinance, there was a couple of constituents and folks from your district that were asking questions. And I just, I invited them to the Fire Risk Reduction Authority Meeting to get some, because Mary Jane would be there. And they were able to kind of hash out some of the things there. But I was assuring them as well that they were assuming that there was punitive action happening right away. And they were just notices, letters, just identifying what the vegetation abatement ordinance was in place. So, just trying to clear the air on that for them and they were able to attend. But I do agree with you and I did mention to them the same thing, so.
Thank you. Should we go ahead and do our 7.3, since I see Scott in the audience? Okay, we'll go ahead and do our 7.3, Consideration of Change Order Number One for the Upper Lake Pedestrian Improvement for Upper Lake High, Middle and Elementary School Projects, State Project Number ATPL 5914103, Bid Number 18-11, for a decrease of $6,000 and revised contract amount of $405,328.9 and authorize the Chair to sign. Scott?
Good morning. This is Change Order Number One for this project. As you can see, the contractor proposed modification to the plan to pour the curb gutter and sidewalk and sidewalk at the same time monolithically. And resulted in a reduction of labor effort for being able to pour the two at the same time. Typically, and the way our detail was shown was they would pour the curb and gutter first and then come back and pour the sidewalk in behind it. And they proposed to pour it all at once. They did a demonstration section for us that was satisfactory. And so, we're going to go ahead and allow that modification. And it resulted in the $6,000 deduction or reduction in the cost of the project.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Just a quick comment. I love that this is 100% state-funded through the, I believe it was the ATP. And that we're still working on figuring out how to save money. And I wish there was a bonus for being good stewards of the people's money, but thank you very much for, to the developer and yourself for making that happen. And I love these, instead of adding more, we're taking away and we're still getting the same project results that we were looking for. So, I really appreciate seeing these.
You're welcome.
So, any public comment or questions on this item? See no movement. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I will motion to approve the Change Order Number One for Upper Lake Pedestrian Improvements for Upper Lake High, Middle and Elementary Schools Projects, State Project Number ATPL 5914103, Bid Number 18-11, for a decrease of $6,000 and a revised contract amount of $405,328.9 and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Scott here. We'll move on to our 7.4, Consideration of Award of Contract for the Lambsen Field Airport Runway, 10-28 Asphalt Slurry Seal Project to Maxwell Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of
$5,710.
Authorize the Chair to execute the agreement and the notice of award.
Good morning. This is, this is, this project's been a long time coming. We had hoped to build this last year, but the Mendocino Complex fires resulted in a closure of the airport. And we just really felt that that was going to be too much of a burden on the businesses to close the airport again later in the summer. So, we put the project off. We actually bid it a couple of times. Surprisingly, didn't receive any bids the first go around. This particular company, though they're from out of the state, we've kind of checked in on them and we've received some really good reviews on the quality of their work. So, we're excited to have them and pleased that they chose to come to Lake County to do the project. We, this is a top priority project for us in our capital improvement plan. And we're excited to deliver it. It will result, and we've been working with the fixed base operators, it will result in some closures, intermittent closures and then an extended closure for about a week, week and a half. But we're working with the fixed base operators, giving them plenty of notice and allowing them to get their affairs ready. So, we can get that airport closed. And once it's done, we'll be good for another seven years with our pavement. So, the FAA, I should note, the bids came in higher than what we have budgeted with our airport improvement program funds. However, the FAA has agreed to fund the balance. And so, we're very appreciative of that. It's about a $300,000 additional amount being kicked in by the FAA. And I would like to note a minor correction to my memo. This project actually is 90% funded through the FAA. And then there's 5% contribution from Caltrans and a 5% local contribution. So, just a minor correction to the memorandum. Other than that, we're ready to go. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
I think one more comment that I would make to add to, and I thought that the original was around 720 or 700,000. So, I was wondering where the rest of the funds were coming from. So, I'm glad the FAA stepped in to do that. But it also came under the engineer's estimate, barely, but just under, which is always good. That means that when you get the one bid, you always wonder if you're going to get a good bid. And when you see the estimate, you say, "Okay, good. We're within range." But also, what's really good about this is this is on the top three priorities of the EDC to re, not repair, refurbish, enhance our airport. And this is the first step. And I'm excited to get this going and I'm looking forward to others. So, happy.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Simon, do you?
I'm going to make a motion.
Is there any public comment on this item? If you could come up, state your name and then three minutes. Oh, Joan, hold on a second. We have to bring the microphone up.
Or she can come up and use Scott's.
I can move over here.
Thank you. I, is this on?
It is.
Anyway, I'm Joan Loss and I did watch the public supervisors' response to the grand jury. I want to commend the grand jury for bringing the airport to our attention. And I want to commend Scott Davio to his written response to that grand jury report. He didn't call anybody names. He didn't call it nonsense. He worked with everybody. So, I think this is wonderful to have. The Lambsen Airport will, and I think it's thanks to the grand jury, the supervisors and Scott Davio.
Thank you, Joan.
I'm actually glad she brought that up because I want to point out that this was already in play way before the grand jury ever dreamed this up. So, thank you for that, Scott, too.
Yeah, I definitely know that it's been in the works for quite a while. I want to thank you very much for just doing the work that's done. Also, this is just one project that you have going on there. You also have the Pilots Lounge that's going on. So, excellent job.
And he's just a little busy out there. I feel bad every time I email him.
I think you made a very good point about the fire slowed things down. This thing was in the works for a while. So, thank you very much.
So, any further public comment before I bring it back to the board? See no movement. I'll bring it back to the board for action. I know this is my district, but if somebody else could.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the contract for the Lambsen Field Airport Runway, 10-28 Asphalt Slurry Seal Rehabilitation Project to Maxwell Asphalt, Inc. in the amount of $1,005,710 and authorize the Chair to execute the agreement and the notice of award.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Are we ready for our 6.3 item? Yes. Okay, 6.3, our 9:30 a.m. item, public hearing, sitting concurrently as Lake County Keys, CSA Number One, Number Two, Number Six, Number Seven, Number Thirteen, Number Sixteen, Number Eighteen, Number Twenty, Number Twenty-One and Number Twenty-Two, Board of Supervisors, Kelseyville County Water Works District, Number Three, and Lake County Sanitation District, Board of Directors. Consideration of A, Resolution Confirming Collections of Annual Lighting Fees; B, Resolution Confirming Collections of Delinquent Water Fees; C, Resolution Confirming Collections of Delinquent Water and Sewer Fees; and D, Resolution of Delinquent Sewer Fees for Lake County Sanitation District.
Madam Chair, just one moment. I want to make sure the gentleman knows this is the item now.
So, you can hear everything? And this is the item, this is the item that you can't hear for? Okay. All right, we're good to go. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Jesus Samron and I am the Deputy Administrator for Lake County Special Districts. This is Wendy Mitchum and she is our Utility Billing Specialist. She'll be helping me out with the tax roll this year. So, I present to the board four resolutions confirming the collection fees for Lacosan, delinquent charges for Kelseyville Water Works, Number- So I present to the board four resolutions confirming the collection fees for Lacosan, delinquent charges for Kelseyville Water Works, number three, delinquent fees for CSA number two, six, seven, thirteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, and the lighting fees for CSA number one.
I'm sorry, just for purposes of clarity and for the gentleman in the back, it's probably going to be a good idea to take these up individually.
Okay, so we'll take up A first, lighting fees.
All right, so these are the, are lighting fees for the service area number one. As in pursuant to ordinance number twenty-three ninety-five that the fees may be collected for the county service areas on the tax roll, this is for the delinquent lighting fees in our service areas.
So any questions or comments on A, lighting fees from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Sorry, I'm very sorry.
It's all good.
When I went through this, it doesn't, I noticed the word delinquent on all the others except for this one, so I wasn't sure if these were new lighting fees or if they were the delinquent for not having paid for the-
No, so these aren't the delinquent ones, these are the, the lighting fees that go on the tax roll annually, these pay our lighting areas because they are enterprise funded.
Right, 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 but they, they are delinquent, or are they, are we just approving to place those fees on the tax roll?
You're approving to place those fees on the tax roll.
Okay, I just wanted to check in.
Thank you.
Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, so what are they on now?
Excuse me?
How are they collected now?
They're collected through the tax roll.
So-
This is an annual process, I believe.
Okay, so this is nothing different, okay, so the delinquent fee, okay, I, I know some communities are different than others, Kelseyville doesn't have one yet and they need one because they're, they've been getting light for free there and there's been a, there was a reserve that was in there, they paid for all their own lights and there was an arrangement, but that reserve is slowly depleting, so there needs, and so that will be what, how's that going to work out? I know this is separate, but I, is it going to be, does it have to be voted on by two eighteen where everybody in, in the area that receives a benefit of it gets to pay it on their bill?
That, we're in the process of working on with Jan, they did, they'd exhausted all their, their reserves and they believe there is going to be rate increase, but we'd have to discuss that further with Jan, what our plans are for the future.
So currently, all these others that we're talking about are, they're on their, it's on the tax roll of each individual property owner, so some of them are delinquent, some of them aren't.
Within those districts.
And that would mean that their taxes are delinquent? Because they're not just paying part of their taxes.
I'm not sure about that their taxes would be delinquent because these are our fees.
Right, but they're a tax, when you get a tax bill, it has a list of all the things that are on it, the bonds and, you know, and all the other stuff that's on there, and this is one of them that's on there?
This is, this would be one of the line items there, yes.
Okay, so these are, so it's assumed then that none of their taxes are paid, because they're not going to just, you know, pay a hundred dollars and not pay the twelve for the lighting fee.
Right, the tax collector takes the entire.
So they're delinquent on their taxes, basically.
See, these ones aren't delinquent and he was correct, there is no delinquent word in this, that was a-
Basically, in order for them to pay for the light, we have to approve to put it on their tax roll annually. The others below that, they were supposed to pay the fee for the bill that they received through a statement sent to them for sewer or water districts and they have not paid.
My apologies, I was actually reading the B where it says delinquent and I was putting delinquent in A, so I apologize, okay.
Yeah, I had to figure that out too when I was looking at it.
Any other comments from the board before I open it to the public? So any public comment on just the A part, annual lighting fees? Seeing no movement, I'll bring, can we, maybe, can we find out what item he's here for part of that so we can make sure we don't miss him? I know it won't be this one, but-
Sewer.
The sewer.
Sewer fees, so that would be C.
Sewer and water.
Okay, wonderful.
Or C and D.
All right, so C, no public input on A, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered. Call roll.
Yes.
Sabatier?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Brown?
Yep.
Scott? Aye, okay, B, resolution confirming collections of delinquent water fees.
So these would be our delinquent water fees in the CSA's number two, six, seven, thirteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty and twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. So these are delinquent fees, these are, are bills we send out bimonthly, the ones that fall over sixty days behind are subject to the tax roll and that's what we consider delinquent.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I did have a question, I'm sorry I didn't ask these questions earlier to you and your department. The service continues nonstop, even if they don't pay their bills, we end up going to their property taxes if they're delinquent, am I correct or do, is there a point where you turn off the utility?
We, we do have shut off fees, if you want to go into that Wendy.
And then one of the things that I'm wondering because it's, I hate to state this publicly, but, but I will, there's a loophole and if you're paying a tax on your property tax, you're going to get a deduction in your next year's taxes because now you paid for a service through taxes rather through a fee on a bill. Is there a fine that's also accrued where we're not getting paid on a monthly or bimonthly basis, so we're kind of losing out by not getting this regular payment, so is there a, a fee that we add for no payment?
There's, there's a ten percent.
Okay, I want to make sure that we're not missing out by people playing games, so.
And a reconnection fee too.
And reconnection fees and shut off fees.
And I believe you, you only shut the water off, you can't shut the sewer off, right?
We don't shut the sewer.
If there's no water, there's no sewer, so shuts, if it shuts it off there, yeah, it's not going to come back, so.
Okay Supervisor Brown, do you have any other question? Okay, I will open up the public comment, is there any public comment on the B part of this public hearing? I thought he was for C, no, he's for B?
It's both.
Okay, if you could state your name, you can sit right there, you're fine.
I'm Charlie Richardson and I was, I live at the Veterans Home in Yountville, been there sixteen years. I welcome, I'd like for you to welcome me back to your city because I love this place. I coached at Clear Lake High School for seven years, football with Milo, I was head track coach and also been American Indian. I started the American Indian Festival here, we have every year here, the Olympics. This shirt, I just happened to be wearing it because it's cotton and it's underneath and I remember, this is oh four, but I started it in nineteen hundred, or nineteen, two thousand, two thousand. But I moved down to Veterans Home because I was a golf pro, I was head track coach at University of Pacific for years, so they talked me into coming here and being your end coach, trainer and then head track coach and I went to the state with two other girls from here, the white girls, sisters. But anyway, I was called here because I refused to pay my taxes because six years ago, I have a home a hundred yards from the city hall and, you can't see that of course, but it's a hundred yards north of the police station, city hall in Clear Lake City. And I bought it twenty-five years ago and I refused to pay my taxes because my water bill and we got a, a very mean manager of water company and he's been there forever, but it was, but I came up and it was zero, zero, zero water and all of a sudden it was a hundred and eighty, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and something, two hundred.
Hold on one second, we're going to have somebody grab that to make sure this, you are in the right place, because I don't know if that-
I got a letter saying to be here at nine thirty.
Where do you, where do you live?
I live in the Yountville-
Or no, no, I'm sorry, where's the property?
Oh, it's one hundred yards north of city hall in Clear Lake City.
Sounds like Highlands Harbor or Highlands Water.
It's just a hundred, it's Golden-
That's not ours?
Or Golden State Water.
Golden State.
The Lake County Special Districts does not service water in Clear Lake.
When you said mean, I knew that hadn't be, that couldn't be us.
Did you have the letter you got telling you to come here?
Yeah, I forgot, left it down in Yountville, but it said nine thirty here and I was upstairs, I was everywhere, finally they told me it was here.
Can I borrow these for a moment?
Yes, see here is what the meter and then all of a sudden the water, I had the secretary, she said, how can we solve this five hundred dollar bill? I says, get a new meter, she says, I have that authority to do it, I've been here longer than the manager, so she did, the bill was twenty-some dollars from then on. The manager got mad, took my meter out because, and I took him to court in San Francisco, the public utility, he wrote twenty-seven pages against me, showing the old meter and all that stuff, twenty-seven pages. And that was seven years ago and I haven't paid it since, but I was welcomed back with a letter to come here at nine thirty.
Yeah, because the sewer, Special Districts out in Clear Lake.
Well, I don't know, understand why I'm here, I just refused to pay the taxes because of the water, I understand I have to pay the sewer.
So I got a suggestion.
I wasn't offered, I've been gone sixteen years and I didn't have a bill for the sewer just recently.
So, Mr. Richardson, I have a question, I have a suggestion here and I don't want to throw, throw Bruno-
No, that's what I'm here for.
Yeah, but I think since it's in your area, you could probably got the connections down there, I think maybe you could probably help him better than anybody can at this point. I mean, I appreciate staff working with him too, but I think Bruno, you know, having come from the city of Clear Lake, that can probably-
And I know the, the manager and the people over at Golden State very well, so we can definitely have a sit down and try to figure out. So sir, when you leave the building, if you can grab a business card of mine in the administration office and get ahold of me, that way we can go ahead and work together and figure out how we can resolve your water issue.
Well, he's impossible to work, I went five or six times telling this meter.
And we're, we're going to have to have that conversation outside of this meeting because this is not the right jurisdiction, the, that is Golden State, that's a private company and so we'll have to figure out with them and we can't do anything right here to make any changes. But if you are here for sewer, for-
That's all I said, sewer and water.
And, but sewer is separate from Golden State, Golden State only provides water, Special Districts, these are people right here, sitting down in front of us, they, they are Special Districts and they take care of your sewage, so if you have a letter saying be here at nine thirty because of sewage, then we can have that conversation right here.
Well, they've been billing me for I think about three years now, but the first thirteen years I didn't get a bill for sewers.
And, and we'll, we'll have to have a, maybe a conversation outside of this as well in order to understand the specifics of your situation. But I think that right now we're on item B, I believe, which is water fees, so I think that we can move on and go to item C, which might be his item or, item D might be his item.
We haven't, we haven't finished B yet, so first we're going to finish B, so is there any other public comment on the B part, the water fees? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board, offering the resolution.
Madam Chair, I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered, please call roll. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Sabatier?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Brown?
Yep.
Aye. C, resolution confirming collections of delinquent water and sewer fees.
So this would be the confirming collection of delinquent charges for the Kelseyville Water Works District, it is sewer and water and once again it's for accounts that are over sixty days past due.
And he said this is just Kelseyville? So where would his sewer fall under then?
The next one.
Oh, the next one, okay.
Where it's just sewer.
Okay, sorry. Any comments or questions on this item? Any comments or questions from the public on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered, please call roll.
Yes.
Sabatier?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Brown?
Yep.
Scott? Aye, resolution for delinquent sewer fees for Lake County Sanitation District.
So this would be the collection of delinquent sewer fees in Lake County, this would be our Lacosan, Southeast, number one, number three and Middletown, so once again over sixty days delinquent, there is not shut off fees for these, they go on the tax roll.
So-
And so Madam Chair, you can see on this resolution, there's a space where a blank is filled in about the number of protests, in fact, all of them have had that. So if this gentleman is protesting, we can, staff can certainly note that, but it's unknown without staff being able to access resources in the office if he is in a delinquent status or if this affects him, he may be timely, we just-
Well, it doesn't hurt anything to put it in protest, it can always be resolved later, so, yeah.
Supervisor Crandall?
I'll wait for Bruno so he can hear.
So what we can do is note that the gentleman is protesting, Jesse if you would, and then make sure that you look up his account status and coordinate with Supervisor Sabatier to communicate with you.
So I was just going to add, Bruno, there was a lady that came before us a couple of weeks back, I had a meeting with her and Jan in, in Special Districts and we got to a point where we can move forward, that, that sounds like something you could possibly do and, and get it ironed out together.
Right.
And we were, were able to move forward.
Nah, I, I, we can't do anything without just bringing all the parties together and figuring out how they can come to an agreement, so.
They worked with, they worked with her and we got it not resolved, but we're in, we're in process of meeting some things.
Good job.
So anything further from the board? Any public comment on D of this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board to offer the resolution.
Madam Chair, for the record, would it be appropriate to have the assistant clerk consider this, this gentleman's comments in context with this last item because he spoke earlier, but in fact, his comments pertain to this.
I believe so.
Madam Chair, I offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered, please call roll. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Sabatier?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Scott? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have I completed all the open session items? I believe so. All right, with that, we will then go into closed session, eight point one, public employee evaluations, title public health director, eight point two, public employee appointment pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven B, appointment of interim water resource director, with that, we'll go into closed session.